For Marlboro County Council for September 10th. Mr. Wood, would you please give us the invitation?
Father, who wants to get Lord your allow to gather together, Lord, again. Father, we thank you, Lord, for life, health, and strength. Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy, Lord, during as you took care of us, Lord, as during came and went. Father, we ask you continue, Lord, to bless this town, bless each and every people in this community. Father, these are blessed in the name of your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Before we approve the agenda items, I have one revision and a date for whole business. Do we need to vote on that as just a clerical?
When y'all make the motion, I think you just would make a note about that.
Make sure we do things properly.
I'll make sure I remind y'all.
Right, thank you. All right. I trust you've had a chance to look through your packet. Are there any additions or deletions or anything else that may not be on the agenda that we need to address? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second that we accept this agenda as printed and we will move forward. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. First is a presentation from Mr. Mullin, our administrator.
Now, I put in your packet the presentation that came from the process last time in 2017. But tonight, I think we're focused on where we are on the different initiatives and issues that council chose to address. And so you should have this, which was different than what's in the packet. It has the same information as the packet, but I took a little bit of detail out for the sake of not being here till 8:15 tonight.
Seven.
Because it is somewhat detailed. So if you see on that, it's the one that has my colors on the front of it. And it should be one laying, that's yours right there, I think. And there's also a slide in there, I think, for the population change. Is that?
Yes.
I have one, yes. I do.
So first of all, I want to draw your attention to this. And I'm sorry I don't have it where y'all can see it as well. But one of the big things that we discussed when we did strategic planning last time was the fact that we've had a significant population loss since 1990 here in the county. And at that time, we saw a 20% decrease in population since 1990, between 1990 and 2016. The census numbers for the county show about 27,000 people in 2016. But as we discussed, we had a significant number of those folks, over 2,000 that were almost 3,000, that were in the prisons here. And they're counted in the population, but obviously aren't contributing to the community or putting any money in the community. So as we move forward in subsequent meetings, we'll get into this in more detail. But I did quickly do an update. And unfortunately, I found that since 2016, the last data we had was 2016, since that time, we've lost an additional 2.3% of our population. Now, I didn't see how bad it would be if we didn't stop this, but as you can see, we're just continuing to lose population. And with that, the money those folks are putting in the community and the contributions they make to the community. So we have a real challenge here that we're working with this strategic planning process to come up with a plan to try to stop. So with that, we'll go into this other sheet here, packet here. And I'll run through some of these initiatives and where we stand. And of course, as always, please ask questions, or if I'm not clear, I'll try to explain it further. One of the first groups of issues that we looked at were health, healthcare. And of course, that's a big issue here. We have no hospital, and we also had issue with EMS. So the first initiative we had was to improve the response time for EMS and evaluate the current system for whether or not, you know, it was doing the best job. And I'm pleased to say that at this point, we've accomplished that initiative by launching a county-run EMS system the 1st of this July. And as we'll report later in the regular meeting, we've gone from 11 and some odd minutes of response time to your house to an average of eight and a half minutes. So that's been done. It was a painful process y'all were involved in, but it was one of your initiatives and it has been accomplished. The other group of initiatives in that topic of healthcare was the need for a hospital here or the closest equivalent. And of course, this is in process. There is activity going on. There was a flurry of activity in the spring where council passed a resolution asking for change in the law that would allow, would make it easier for a mini-hospital to come here. And we held meetings with the legislative delegation, Senator Malloy, with DHEC and others to try to move that along. And it sort of stopped about the time summer, you know, cranked up. And we've had recent contacts with Senator Malloy's office about starting that back up. So that's in process. Other towns and city eventually passed a resolution like y'all did. And the charities trust board has gotten behind us as well. So we want to crank that back up and work towards that. That's very important to people in the community. Moving along to the next page is the environment was an issue. And one big set of issues were litter problem that we have here. We have a lot of housing that's in poor shape, mobile homes, abandoned structures, that sort of thing. And we had several initiatives in there, smaller things. One of them was to have a county-wide cleanup effort. And of course, we've done that twice. And that's in process because we'll do that again. So that's worked fairly well. We've seen the city of Bennettsville adopted this as well and has had several of these type events. The next one is to try to work towards cleaning up, you know, broken down houses and mobile homes. We really haven't done much with that, other than we found that we do have some money that's taken off of every permit for a mobile home. So if you get a permit for a mobile home, a little bit of money's put aside. So we have $20,000 or $30,000 there that we can use towards that. But we haven't acted on that yet. The next one is to try to clean up abandoned industrial buildings. And of course, the Delta Project is probably the biggest site like that we have. And we have begun that process. We, our attorney's been able to get us clear title, and we have companies working now to begin that cleanup process. So that's going well. We started the yellow dumpster program where your community group, a church group, if they want to have a neighborhood cleanup, we can provide you with a dumpster to receive that material and dump it for you at no charge. So we're doing that. I think we have it out now, Mr. Hamilton, Ms. Carabo. So we're trying to push that along, and it's been a good thing. The last set in that environment thing was about the solid waste collection, the trash pickup, the roll carts in the county. We all at that time knew that we had service issues with them and were concerned about compliance with people using the system as well. And as you know, and I'm pleased to announce that we've moved along with that. At the last meeting, county council approved a new company to do that. And Mr. Carabo and others are working towards finalizing that contract and also putting those fees out there on the appropriate property tax bills to collect the money. So that is moving along, and we're excited that that's going to alleviate a lot of complaints about service we get constantly and also save money for people that have been paying for the carts. Saves, I think, $110 a year for folks that are elderly or disabled. So that's a good thing. Any questions so far? Next group of things was personal financial well-being. And I guess this just means, you know, how well folks are doing here, their poverty level, how, you know, what kind of income folks have and money to spend. And obviously, a big group was, a big group of issues was centered around the need for jobs and economic development. And the first initiative was to create additional industrial sites and improve existing sites. And again, the Delta Project is sort of all in to do that. And that's a huge 300-acre site, and we've already seen activity from the state bringing us, people look at it even before we started cleaning it up. So we're excited about that. We also had an initiative of participating with other counties and multi-county industrial sites. We are involved with Dillon and Marion with regards to the Harbor Freight site. We're in partnership with that. And that agreement provides for those three counties to do another one of those, whether it's here or in Marion. So we've already had some discussion with Marion in particular, but we haven't moved very far. So that's sort of coded as a yellow or whatever color that is. Another one in there was to leverage the county on railroad. We, of course, the county owns the railroad here and leases out its operation. And that's been a huge asset with Domtar and Aralco and some others here in the county in hauling freight for them. And so we've had a study completed and had some renewed discussions in the last month and meetings about where we can find more customers, where we can attract people to come here and put a plant that would need that, rehabilitating some rail that goes out to the old Marley site. We're working on that. And so that's definitely in progress, and they got a green mark for that. There's a couple of other ones at the end here about the loss of population and the fact that those folks were contributing or putting money in the economy, and that's gone. And also, sales tax revenue and local business. And if you remember, at that time we did this, I pushed forward an initiative called Destination Marlboro, which is focusing on attracting new residents and also some tourism. I know the city has taken some of that when we did that and acted on it and hired staff and moved in that direction. And I would like to see that we have in the budget for this year for the county to be more active in that area. You know, that's one way to counteract losing population, is attract new people. The next page is public safety. Again, I apologize for just reading this, but there's no real easy way to do it. Public safety is obviously very important, and we had several different areas there to talk about. The first was the need for more law enforcement, county law enforcement patrol-type deputies. And we worked well, I think, with sheriff's office. They worked well with us with our budget constraints. And this year, we did, y'all approved a budget request for an additional patrol deputy and also to replace 17 law enforcement vehicles. And that's a big deal because they were in poor condition. So I think that's a green mark and that that's moving in the right direction. Another big issue we've had over the recent years is the fact that our fire service in the county, it depends on volunteers. And volunteers are all aging out, you know, they're all getting to be, you know, 50 years old or whatever, and they're not going to pull a hose as much as a 20-year-old. And how do you attract those people? And also, folks nowadays, they don't have a job where they can, when the alarm goes off, they can leave and go respond to calls. So council approved a program to help pay per call for responding and also reimburse them for other expenses. We've also seen a new program where we have several folks working during the day on the county payroll. So at least the truck can get moving towards a call when we have one. And I think that's a solid green because it's been, all of it's been funded and all of it's in place. And every year, council looks at it and tries to tweak it. And we'll continue to do that. So we're proud of that one. And before the strategic planning, council went up on the, created more tax revenue for fire service. And that helped folks that were outside of the classification to get fire insurance, to be able to get fire insurance. And that was a big deal. Now, the last thing we had on here was to consider or to evaluate the five-mile radius fire contract we had with the city of Bennettsville. And if you remember, we did that, went round and round with that and came back out with an agreement. And I think everybody in the end was happy with that. At this time, it didn't warrant county creating their own fire department to handle that. It was better to partner with city, and that's what's happened. We had a, excuse me, we had an area on education. And of course, our secondary school, the school district, you know, has that charge and they're working on that. But we did have an initiative to support N E T C's development of a vocational training system center at the Owen Dixie Building. And of course, y'all remember, county owned that building and put that building into the pot to do that. It is up and running and I think fairly successful. There is, it gets not the dark green, but almost dark green because there is a need for a little more vocational education there, a little more focus on that. But that is moving forward, and they're doing a fairly good job with that. Hopefully, we're getting close to the end because I'm going to run out of breath. Recreation and amenities was a subset. Council wanted to focus on having field and team sports and less, and more stuff for adults and females, not just stick-in-ball sports. And that meant catching up on maintenance on our facilities, which we've done some of, creating more sports and activities for this target group, develop adult and senior programs. And that's a yellow because we haven't made a lot of progress, but we are very close to hiring a recreation director and sort of the number two person there. We've been interviewing for two weeks. And of course, that person will be focused on doing just this, and they'll be a professional person. So we're excited about that. We had an initiative to amend the blue laws. And the blue laws, if folks don't know, were the laws that prevented alcohol sales on Sunday. County council pushed that forward to get it on the ballot so that county didn't make that decision, people could vote on it. It passed, and that was done about this time last year. So that's done. We had something to, we had an initiative to utilize our cultural and historical attractions more. And we did hire a new director, museum director, director of cultural affairs in 2018, and she is working to do that more and more and more. So we're seeing that progress in that area. Any questions again? I'm training to be an auctioneer, so I think good practice. Transportation and infrastructure, very important. One of the first issues was the condition of our unpaved roads, our dirt roads. County had 185 miles of dirt road. I remember that. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain those. And so we worked to retire ones. There are a lot of folks that want to close roads that nobody lives on, and they own the property. And we've seen a handful of those happen, and we've supported that when it can happen. You know, we have to make sure that that road doesn't have some other purpose, but if it's clearly serving one person's land or two people's land. And we've, Mr. Carabo, when he came on, has worked hard to put a program in place to put rock aggregate on the really high, highly, the ones that are traveled the most and most highly densely populated. And so that's in process. We did receive some funding from the county transportation committee, which is a big help. You know, folks are quick to say that the county has a fee on your vehicle bill, but we spend every dime of that just keeping things going. It's hard to do more. And so that money from the paving committee helped us a lot. And so you'll see that happening. Of course, the hurricane knocked us for a loop, and you know, we're kind of coming out of that now, last year's hurricane. We have an initiative on the lack of public transportation for workforce. People can't get to work because they don't have a car, their carpool car breaks down. And as you know, this is done. County council approved some pretty innovative funding to go in with P D R T A and Care South. And the city and some towns came in too to create this bus system that's running in the county. The project was approved for three years because I think council was wise in recognizing that you can't just try it for a year and wonder why it didn't work. So they're building it up, and the ridership is going up. We've got the new plant in Cliao. They'll start to use more in Cliao, so it's a good thing. Okay, so then the next one we had was an item about poor internet service, it's cell service. And council did push a little bit, and we've got some media coverage about it, but there really hasn't been any action there. But there are a couple of things in the works there on state level that we were privy to and hope to have some good news there soon. I think people realize in state leadership in agencies that the rural areas, you know, in a mile, you might have three houses. A mile in the city has, you know, 15 houses. So there's not a lot of money to be made there if you look at it that way. So it may be that there has to be some program from the state that helps that along, and that's what we're hoping for. We all suffer from that. Another very big initiative was the proposal to four-lane Highway 38 from the traffic circle at Beauty Spot Road to the North Carolina line. We met with the legislative delegation and the director of DOT, and nothing really happened. So it's about a $30 million project. I was very, I was recently in the last week contacted by the county manager, county administrator in Richmond County, Rockingham. And they are, their county board of commissioners, they call themselves, is very, very interested in four-lane from 74 to the line. And they want to come and talk with you all about a joint effort. The thing they have going in their favor is the North Carolina DOT has money and will do it. And we don't seem to have that. But if you haven't ridden up 38 on the weekend, and you really want to get a thrill, go try to make that trip. It's pretty dangerous right now. So I think that's something that needs to go, be pushed again. And the last slide is more internal county government things. I won't go too deep into it, but basically, we've worked over the last two years to have better reporting internally so we can see where we are and how we're progressing. And we've done that. We've created, you know, things like you get in your packet for EMS that tell you how things are going and what areas we need to work on. We've put software in place to where we have work orders for everything. So y'all, you know, Mr. Bird will call about something in McCall, or Mr. Anthony call about Cliao, and we'll put that into a work order so they get to it and we can track how it's going. One thing that we're going to start working a little more on is a 3-1-1 system, which is a little more, if you call about a road, we put it in that. It'll actually tell us on a map where it was, and you can look, see where you're having problems. And we're setting that up internally to work a little better. So I'm happy with the progress we've made internally. Of course, as you know, these things have led us towards, you know, reducing the amount of money that's coming out of the deficit, you know, coming out of the reserve, and those things all come from this effort. So we're happy with that. I know that was a lot and a little bit of time, but that's sort of where we are. And I think the next step is to, like we did last time, is to meet and have a workshop and see which direction you all want to go for the next two years or three years.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Plaiso?
I think we, we do appreciate everything you've done, Mr. Mullin. I think workshop we did a couple of years ago has moved forward, you know, going by the information that you laid out for us. We, as a committee, done, and along with your guidance, you know, we've done a lot so far. And we, if we meet again, I think we can expand our wishes and our desire to make Marlboro County a better place. Take time.
Anyone else?
Thank y'all.
I too like complimenting you and your staff for putting this together. And in case you haven't gone through your packet, the full document, seven, three pages, is very interesting because it gives more detail to show how we got in the place that we were, what we've done to improve, so add more information as you discuss with people in your districts about just what we're doing. And as Mr. Wood says, when you have a plan, you can make better decisions, you know, and be ready to take advantage of opportunities as they come up if they fit in the plan. And I think everything that we've done has to fit in the plan, you know, because we've put a lot of time and effort, and it shows. We've done a lot in two years, so let's keep adding. And Mr. Mullin, you're going to give us some dates in October where we can have a follow-up session and look at the buildings part of it too. Thank you so much. All right. Next, approval of the minutes for the August 13, 2019 regular council meeting.
Madam Chair, may I have your second minute written?
All right. It's been moved and sec-
Is that with that amendment?
No, this is the minutes. That's, we're going to do this in the item four. Yeah, thank you. But I've, yeah. It's been moved and second that we approve the minutes for the August 13, 2019 regular council meeting. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. For ordinance 787, to authorize installation payments of taxable real property within Marlboro County as provided by South Carolina Code Section 124575 as amended. And there is one revision on the third page behind tab four. The date above the signatures should be for the 2020 tax year. When I read through this and I saw 2019, so yes. So make that revision. And this is what we have been discussing about how best to solve our solid waste program. I think we came up with a good plan, and this is the step that will put everything in motion. Questions or comments on it? I did have one thing I wanted to make clear. Let me find where it is. All right. So, Mr. Mullin, everything that's outlined in ordinance 787 will be carried through. I was looking at, you know, they, people will get a payment plan or schedule, return envelope, so they'll know exactly, those that elect to have the five payments, they know exactly when they have to make their payments and everything.
Well, if you remember, you know, we found that we can't really do it for this coming year. And so when we sat down and looked at this, we felt like we should at least ask you all to approve it so we have that tool there. But before it would be implemented, we'd have to sit down again and make sure that we have everything in line. But it is a, it came from Chesterfield County, and it's been thought through. So it doesn't mean that that's going to happen this year because if you remember, there's, but yes, ma'am, we would follow that because it's following the statute.
It's really important, like you pay on the payment plan. You want to know when your payment's due. You don't want to be on the wrong side of making a late payment. But that will start with next year. All right. Any questions or clarifications? All right. Then entertain a motion.
So moved. I moved that we authorize an installation.
It's been moved and second that we approve third reading for ordinance 787 that will take effect with the 2020 tax year. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. All right, thank you, unanimous. Next, we have ordinance 787 to amend the building codes ordinance to adopt the latest and future additions of the building, fire, plumbing, mechanical, gas, electrical energy, and residential codes as mandated by the state of South Carolina Building Code Council. First reading and title only. Want to add any comments?
It's just a housekeeping thing that hasn't been updated since the late, like 2006 or '09 or something. So we put it in there title only to get the readings going. And then Mr. Hamilton and others will work to make sure we bring everything up to date. We're up to date, but it's just something you're supposed to look at every so often this time.
Exactly. All right.
Madam Chair, may I have your second ordinance 788? 788, correct?
Yes. 788?
Yeah. I think you said 787.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 788.
I'm wearing my new glasses, okay? These came from the dollar store.
I'm sorry, that motion.
It's been moved and second that we approve in title only, ordinance 788. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Ordinance 789, to repeal ordinance 579 and to establish Marlboro County personnel policies and procedures. It's a work in progress, so we are doing the title only, first reading.
Yes, ma'am. Again, it takes three readings, and it's something that hasn't been done since, same thing as the building codes. So Ms. Sumter will lead this effort along with our labor attorney, and we'll have you something to look at as we move forward from here. You know, we're looking at leave policies, all the different things that need to be updated occasionally.
All right.
Motion approved, ordinance 789.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve ordinance 789, first reading only. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Resolution 091901, authorize the submission of an application by Marlboro County for airport grant from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $549,681 and the authorization to accept the grant if awarded.
Yes, ma'am. This is an annual grant we do through the FAA, and it really helps us a lot, keep the airport up. We have a great airport. And we do have to match it, I believe it's 10%, but we budget for that out of the economic development money every year.
I read my numbers wrong.
I'm sorry.
I got a different station.
I jump ahead.
$549,861.
Checking each other.
You going to pay for my new glasses? You gonna pay for my new glasses?
We could take a donation out of it.
This is my third meeting for today, okay? The most important one, so thank you for making sure I get my facts straight. All right. All right. You ready to vote?
So move.
Second.
Okay. See, you got me off. All right. It's been moved in second that we accept and authorize the administration to accept the grant and award it. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. Resolution 091902, to authorize Marlboro County to enter into an intergovernmental agency, excuse me, agreement with the town of Clough to provide building permitting services, building inspection services, and code enforcement services for Clough within the corporate limits of Clough.
Yes, ma'am. We're actually gonna ask that y'all table this, and let me explain why. Uh, we had a meeting with the mayor and one of the city council members, and we're all on the same page. It's all good. But the part of it about the animal control, we, I neglected to think about talking to the animal shelter folks because there's a charge for that. Um, so, um, I don't, we could go one or two routes. You could approve it with the exception of animal control, or we could table it and just do it at the next meeting. Um, either one's okay, and it's just something we missed, but we wanna be clear. If, Councilman Woods, you may have had conversations with them. If there's a real press to have everything but that going, you know, we could, y'all could approve the resolution to include everything but animal control services, and then we could bring that back to y'all next time.
I think, uh, I think we need you to table that, 'cause we wanna make sure we get all our does in the roads, so we don't have to go back.
Along with the table that to our next meeting, and this week and everything laid out.
Okay.
We don't have to go back and forth.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Plato, just second the motion to table Resolution 091902 until it includes information about animal control. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a proclamation. Marlboro, excuse me, Palmetto Brick Company has been in operation, continuous operation by the family for 100 years. Uh, it says a lot for longevity in today's microwave society, and, um, they're having a formal program on Friday, September 13th. You've all been invited. Thank you for receiving your, um, so the actual, um, proclamation will be presented to them at this time, but I would like to read it so it's in our official, uh, documents. Um, it's the last page? Oh, okay. Um, a proclamation honoring Palmetto Brick on their 100th anniversary. Whereas Palmetto Brick was founded in 1919 by J.L. Anderson in Raleigh, South Carolina, with a focus on making a quality project, product at a fair price. Whereas Palmetto Brick's long history includes four generations and has continued of Mr. J.L. Anderson's vision, which has focused on his emphasis on the value and his unwavering commitment to creating quality bricks of strength and elegance. Whereas Palmetto Brick is the largest family-owned brickmaker in South Carolina with the capacity to produce more than 150 million bricks per year and remains one of only a handful of American-owned and operated brick manufacturers in the United States. And whereas Palmetto Brick has been a viable asset over the past 100 years, investing in the local community, and will continue to serve as a staple and integral part of Marlboro County's business community in the years to come. Now therefore, be hereby proclaimed that the members of the Marlboro County Council do hereby celebrate with Palmetto Brick its 100th anniversary and thus hereby wish Palmetto Brick continued success in all future endeavors adopted this 10th day of September 2019. We need to vote on this. Let's vote on this. Have a motion to-
So move.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second that we honor Palmetto Brick for their 100 years of service with this proclamation and will be formally presented during their program on the 13th. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you. All right. Any appointments to boards and commissions? Okay. All right. Uh, we have reports. Mrs. Moore?
Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of August, expenditures were at 16% of the budgeted amount, and this is on target for this point in the fiscal year. Um, and we anticipate that revenues will increase, um, over the next few months after the tax notices go out and those monies begin to come in. Our external auditors are planning to be here this coming Monday, September 16th, and will begin our work for the fiscal year 2019 annual audit. So McLeiner and I have been very busy preparing for their visit, um, and we do anticipate a timely completion of the fiscal year 2019 audit. Are there any questions?
Thank you. All right. Mr. Munnell?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as we always do, we'll recognize various service anniversaries. In this month, we have Susan Rivers with 18 years, Patty English with 11 years, Sharon Wilson with 19 years, Lindora Johnson, seven years, Janella Williams, 13 years, Robin O'Toole, seven years, Jeremy Steen, nine years, Sarah Alvarez, five years, Venitra Ferguson, 20 years, Greg Levine, six years, Shanika Snicker with five years, and Steve Akers with 21 years. So we have a lot of folks that have been here for a while, which is a good thing. As far as economic development, well, we had one piece of not-so-good news. Uh, Project Raid, which is a project we had at the Delta Site, it was pretty far along, has suspended the project due to the trade war that's going on between China and the U.S. So, um, you know, sometimes you think things you see on TV don't apply to here, but this has put it on the, uh, on the side burner. This project would have employed about 75 people. We hope it'll come back once things calm down, but that's the word for now. Um, as Dr. Prince said, we have the Palmetto Brick event. I think you all were invited. If you need details, I can talk to Ms. Bundy. But we're excited they're celebrating 100 years. I don't, you know, not very many companies have been around that long and much less that have made their home in Marlboro County and employed as many people as Palmetto Brick. So we congratulate them on that. Um, hurricane, uh, switching to the administrator's report, we were fortunate to, uh, not to have too much prob, too many problems with a hurricane that just came through. We did have the community, the meeting with all the different public safety agencies like we did last year, which was good. Everybody had good attendance, and I think we had some new folks, so they got to see kinda how that works. Always a good thing to get everybody in the same room and have some communication. Um, you should have a, in your, in your packet, a copy of EMS, uh, metrics for the month of August. It's our second full month of data, uh, and what we're using to collect that data seems to be working fairly well. Um, of course, when you're, when you're measuring something, you know, it takes a few months before you have something really to look at. But we, so far, pleased. We've seen the, uh, response time for August, the average response time is eight minutes and 48 seconds, which improves over July's number, which was nine minutes and seven seconds. And if you remember, when we all, uh, when it came time to take action here, the, the average time was 11 minutes, 48, 41 seconds. So there's been a real difference in that. Still challenges in starting something new and working through those as we go. Uh, we will, next month will be the quarter end, so we'll have the director, Brian Watts, come give you a more detailed report. And we'll have enough, enough going on to really give you a good report. I'm excited about a project we, uh, that, that sort of fell in place right before the hurricane came through, and that's, um, we were able to save the bell from the PD Missionary Baptist Church on 38. And I think I may have reported to council some time back that, uh, trying to get involved and trying to save the church. But, um, and the preservation, Historic Preservation Commission and the leadership of the church worked to find some money to go try to save the church, but after talking to three engineers and contractors, it's too far gone. So it sat, and then, uh, most of it fell in, and the only thing left standing was the steeple with the bell in it. Now, this church was started in 1834, and it's, it's, uh, important to this county, I think. I'm, of course, I'm a history person, because it has, uh, it's served a predominantly black, African-American congregation and a predominantly white congregation over those 185 years. So we were able to get ahold of the right people, um, uh, again, thanking the Preservation Commission and Museum Director Lynn McLean. Ms. Doris Sumter got called into action because she knew, knew folks that we could get ahold of quickly, and were able to go down there and get it out of there before it fell over. Um, and we have it stored now, uh, in a county building safe, and then we'll come together with the church and figure out what to do with it. But it didn't break, because we, we were able to get it out. So that's a good thing, I think. Um, we continue to do a lunch at the Community Kitchen. This is be our third month, I think, third time. And, um, county employees, different ones, and some council members come together to do that. This is our third month serving, and, uh, Ms. Bobby Grooms is the leader, uh, the library director is the leader of the group, and, uh, and they're putting that together, having chili beans, oyster crackers, corn chips, and fruit cups. So if you come help, you might get the leftovers. Another good thing going on, if you remember, after the hurricane, we, uh, we worked to try to form a Marlboro County Long-Term Recovery Group, which is to be a non-political group that could receive help for folks here and administer that. And, um, Ms. Doris Sumter is involved in the leadership of that, and they have an event. Doris, will you mind telling everybody about the event Monday?
Monday, at 6:00 p.m., at the University Center, Ring of Honor Baptist Baptist Church in Seminole. And it's for all the citizens of the county, and we will have a phone here from American Red Cross, from the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, all providing information regarding how to prepare for disasters and what to do after disasters. And we would like for everyone to get the word out, all the citizens there in one spot, so we can all hear the information and be able to disseminate the information to everyone there.
That's a nice color flyer there, Pat. That's nice.
This is a great, uh, program, and appreciate Doris and other folks leading the group to, uh, for their time, as, as they started it from scratch, and, you know, that's always hard. Um, okay, and then the last thing we have is a solid waste update. We touched on it a little bit in the regular meeting, but staff is finalizing the details regarding the new collection system and the new, uh, company, and Mitch Carabo is working to finalize the agreement with them and what all they'll do. We worked to determine, uh, with the tax office to figure out which, you know, if you own Homestead, you, your bill's this much and that sort of thing. That was a, a challenge, but we think we have it there. Um, and we, we have a, uh, a mailer prepared that we wanna mail out to everybody ahead of time and kinda explain what's going on, because I think that will help some. Um, and we'll send that out to you all and let you look at it. But it's basically kinda what's gonna happen in some frequently asked questions people can look through. But I did wanna say, um, of course, on the record here for the, the Facebook or the audience here, just kind of real briefly what's getting ready to happen, and that's that all the properties in the county, not the towns or cities, will be charged $200, $205 a year. Now, if you're elderly or disabled, it'll be $170 a year. Businesses and agricultural property will not be charged, because they're not typically a dwelling. But what it means is you'll have a new cart, probably won't be red, I don't know, and a new company picking it up. This amount will be put on the property tax bills, and those bills will be issued in October and due January 15th, if you don't pay it late. Um, if you own property and you rent it out, then you'll have to pay that and pass it along, that sort of thing. And then beginning in February, the new service will begin picking up the trash. They'll put the carts out before then, of course. The county will take the money we collect and pay the company, and therefore, when you have a concern about service, you'll have a number to call with the company, but if you have a problem or we see a problem, the county will get involved to make sure we don't have ongoing and continuing problems. So I know some folks have thought that they'll just call here. If it's something simple, you know, you can call the company. But if it becomes a problem, we will stay involved in this and we will go and fix this. But the new contract, and when we put it out for bid, you know, requires that the company have well-maintained equipment, that has a plan for putting this into action, and we put a lot of work into bringing you a recommendation of someone that we think won't be an issue. So all that's coming, and, um, it's been some work, but I think once we adjust to the fact of paying, paying it once a year, um, it's gonna clean up the county and make it a lot better.
And the, the extra $40 that was on the bill, it's included in this year, correct?
That's correct. So if you're, if you're not on Homestead, your bill will be $205, and that's it.
Right.
And if, and if you're elderly, it'll be $170, that's it. The, the $40 went to $10 and got added to that. So good point. You'll still be able to take your mattresses, your appliances, your tires to the county site. You will not be able to take your trash there. In additions, the people who live in Clough, McCall, Blenheim, and Bennettsville will see $10 on their bills, their tax bills. That will allow them to take their trash, their mattresses, their chairs, their stuff to the county dump for free, um, because the city quit doing that. And of course, uh, we had a lot of feedback that folks wanted to pay that, so they could take their stuff there. Hopefully that's it, sorta in a nutshell. Amazes me that folks don't really keep up with things and, and they don't really know what's going on, so you wanna put it out there as many times as we can.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions or comments? All right. We have, um, citizens' requests. Ms. Renee Roland, is that, is that correct? All right. Would you step to the podium and give your name and address?
My name is Renee Roland. I'm here on behalf of Safety for South Marlboro County. First of all, I'm nervous. I've never done this before.
Doing good.
Um, I'm here in hopes to get some help to get a sidewalk put in from KFC to Dundee. I have been getting, I've had a petition, um, so far got 317 names. I held a 10 event in front of the Bennettsville Motel. Just that day alone, I got 186 signatures. We interviewed five people. One of those people was an employee at Dundee. She walks that road every day. There's only maybe a foot and a half of walking room on one side, and the other side, the ditch is really close. Um, I just need to be pointed in the right direction. I do have a lot of followers, and I am gonna continue doing things to get this, um, public involved. By me getting this many signatures, I am gonna hold some more, or get some more 10 events. Just point me in the right direction, tell me what I need to do. I just, I think we need a sidewalk out there, if, if not on both sides, at least on one side. There's children, families out there, there's, I've seen people pushing sidewalks, um, wheelchairs, all of that. I just think that the sidewalks would really help out there.
If you give your contact information to Mr. Munnell, he will get with you.
I'll tell you what you wanna get.
It is a safety issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jones and Ms. McNeil, both from the City of Bennettsville. We ask, since you're on the same topic, we just ask one of you to make a presentation, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Plato, for asking us to come and speak to y'all tonight. We're excited to come and tell you about a project, I think she mentioned to you last month, a joint effort that the county and city are planning, a trunk or treat. This was an effort that the city began last year in partnership with the Mary Wright Edelman Public Library staff from the county. Um, we had a fantastic event on the Courthouse Square. Um, it was the last Saturday in October last year. It will also be the last Saturday in October, October 26th. We're planning on this event being from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the square. Um, we had a meeting, a second meeting this afternoon to discuss it. Councilman Abraham from the city and Councilwoman Plato are leading the effort along with associated staffs, including the library and including the Bennettsville Police Department, I mean, Fire Department. The goal is 75 trunks. And for those of you who are not familiar with the trunk or treat, it is a very safe, family-friendly way for children to be costumed, adults to be costumed. We have contests, costume contests for both children and adults that the library staff is gonna coordinate again this year. But they, trunks back, we, our vision is for trunks to back up to the Courthouse Square. We will block off, um, the square from Main Street all the way around on both sides, on the east, north, and west sides, and have 75 trunks. Those trunks can be car trunks, truck trunks, front-end loader trunks, street sweeper trunks, utility, uh, vehicle trunks, anything. I think, especially for children, a lot of them, we talked about the street sweeper today. Children don't know what that is. They see it on television, but they're in school and the street sweeper is going out, or they're still asleep. So being able to bring some of those county and city departments- So being able to bring some of those county and city departments together, as well as y'all, we will encourage each of you. We had a visitor center set up, a mobile visitor center last year. Have a realty office, why not? Have a garage, why not? So we're excited about the possibility and the partnerships that we envision. This is in conjunction with Fire Prevention Month, so the city fire department is coordinating the effort, but to bring countywide fire departments together, our thought is to have those located on the west side of the square, or either in the Gulf itself, and have Market Street blocked off there, but to have a smokehouse, an obstacle course, the display of the different fire vehicles and equipment, that will create a lot of excitement for the children. We're envisioning involving churches, businesses, clubs, school sports teams, but just really trying to get the community to come together. We want to serve hot dogs, free hot dogs for the children, our goal is five hundred. So last year, we think we had close to five hundred participants, and we envision that many more, so basically, one child will bring probably two adults. So we could easily have thousand, fifteen hundred folks, which would be great. But it really needs to be a countywide effort on a central location, Courthouse Square. And we're excited about that. Anything else you want to add, Ms. Plato?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I think, I think all my county members here will be able to get me.
And we'll have a flyer out for y'all, can we get it to you, Mr. Mullin, for you to circulate? But they will, Ms. Plato and Mr. Abraham are getting individuals from across the county to help spread the news, recruit teams.
Your time's up. Sorry. But she's brought this before council for the past two, two months, and we're all on board, so thank you for taking the time, appreciate it, yeah. I'm not going to be in costume, though. Ms. Plato will, no, Ms. Plato will. I know that. Thank you. All right, council, you want to start?
I'll go start about here. Matter of fact, Clough is having a community night out every speed, is our fifth year doing it, is an opportunity for the leaders in Clough and churches to, what the kids didn't got started in school, now we got a community night, they got bouncer houses, they got, we're getting with free hot dogs and chili and drinks and so forth. With the opportunity for the kids to, I'm gonna take a, like their early fall break for them, so you know, they're doing their thing right now, and when I leave here, I'm gonna go and close it down, I hope.
Okay.
Get a hot dog.
Ms. Plato, hold up, please, I forgot Mr. Weaver from the Sheriff Department. I'm so used to seeing Sheriff Lemon sitting there, I didn't mean to ignore you, sir, please.
Chairman, Chairperson, County Council Administrator, appreciate this opportunity to come up here. First of all, we certainly appreciate the support from the County Council, we at the Sheriff's Office, and we also appreciate what I feel a great working relationship. It should continue, and it, and it will. But thank y'all so much for everything y'all have done for us, and it's really nice. My other thing, the sheriff, we were at a meeting before I came here, and he's at another commitment, because you know he would be sitting back there, and he was letting me know if, if there was going to be any relief effort toward islands, the Bahamas, that at his church, Beaver Dam Church, the ladies there are prepared for fundraisers and everything, and wanting to do something in conjunction with the county to help if anything like that comes up. But he was wanting to convey that to y'all, and whatever needs to be done, can get in touch with him, and they could join in on that effort, if, if, you know, that comes about. But thank y'all again, thank you for what you've done, certainly appreciate you. Thanks.
So, sir, are you saying that his church is already making plans to do some fundraising?
Yes, ma'am, it's the ladies in his church, and they're planning on fundraisers and different things like that.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Plato, thank you for your patience.
I'll just, I don't have one of two things to say, and that is that, thank you, Brittany and Ms. McNeil for your coming, and just like we had talked about, this trunk or treat that we're planning on having, and just like the members here said there, I think they're on board with me to help do whatever they can to pull this off. I think our administrator is going to be with, be with us, behind us with it, and I think we're going, it's going to be good. I think it's going to work out fine. Start off good this year, we'll work, but be better next year. But the main thing, my main thing, is getting everybody to work together. We can get more done if we work together. And sometimes, you say that might be a hard task, but sometimes, to try to get people to work with you, you struggle with it, but I'm not one that roll over easy, I like to, I work hard and I try to work and keep working to try to get it done. And I'm not going to stop, I'm going to keep working. And see, that it is done, we got to work together, and show love for each other, show love for each other, put all the other stuff on the back burner, and let's try to put them together and do what we got to do in the county. If we can work together to try to improve the county, we can get more done when we're working together than pulling against each other. And I'm quite sure everybody know that. Now, I'm not going to start quoting no scriptures and about the Bible tonight, I'm just going to leave that alone. Okay? Preach? No, I'm not. When I'm done, I'm good.
A lot of good things going on in the community. Y'all just put in applause for the Mitchell Agency, we're sponsoring a movie night through the chamber. Is that the, is that September twenty-eighth? I believe, I believe it's twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. So I hope everybody can make it out. It's going to be right here on the Courthouse.
On Courthouse, September twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
What was showing?
Hounds line.
It's a true question.
It will not be X-rated.
It will not.
It will be G-rated.
Okay.
Okay. Sir?
Just a little graduate payment of brick, you know, a hundred years in business is a, is a long time, so you know, that's, that's one of the cornerstones of our county, you know, if you look around, a lot of buildings are built with, with brick, so you know, for that being, it's family-owned, you know, there's still only a handful of family-owned businesses, everything else is commercialized, or, you know, owned from overseas persons, so it's good to know those, and so if you know any of those, they're good people, and they work with us, and try to work with anybody in the county whenever they're building something to try to keep their bricks local, so that's a good thing also. Hated to hear about the, the company that we had on the burner for Delta, but hopefully when that's cleaned up, if we spark some interest with it, we look, I mean, I can only imagine whenever we get it cleaned up, you know, there should be plenty of interest on there. And just for the people watching, I mean, I know we get a few calls about the roads here and there, so Mr. Carabo and his staff, they're working hard on the roads to get them, you know, the ditch banks cut and everything, there's a lot of state-maintained roads that's, got a lot of grass growing up that is not the county's, and so, you know, notify the state if you have a problem with a safety, coming to a stop sign. I think there's probably quite a few of them, you know, the later on it gets in the year that you have that, but a lot of those roads are state-maintained roads that, that trees or stuff are growing into, so hopefully they can get that. Talked with some people about OY Road the other day, and so from what I understand is there was supposed to be a meeting between the landowner and de-heck, but it got postponed because of the hurricane, and so hopefully that land, hopefully that'll actually, they can meet in the near future and hopefully get something going on OY Road. So we'll try to continue to press forward, I think it should have been fixed, I think it's, if it's a state-maintained road, I think the state should have maintained it and fixed it. You know, they have right-ofways, they have thirty-foot right-ofways, so you know, I just think, you know, I know Mr. Odomnill had some good news over there, they got one there fixed, but you know, it's, I just, I still think that's, if, there's plenty of state tax dollars that go in, there's gas dollars, I mean, gas tax and everything, but that road should not be still closed, so hopefully we can still get a push, and hopefully something can happen in the near future on that.
Thank you.
Two things real quick. One of them is recreation, we're really, really pleased to hear about us moving on with recreation, that's a great idea. Dealing with more women coming in, doing recreation, and senior citizens, which is, we've been short of both of them, so that's a real big deal. I know we looking for somebody in recreation, right, and I know we're going to get the best people that we can get, because we want somebody that's going to bring seniors in and bring women in, and been working with that kind of program, and knowing our administrator, we're going to have that, so I'm really pleased about that. The other thing is, I know everything costs money, right? So I'm also looking at the fact of how much money we've been losing every year for recreation that have been taken from us for quite a few years now. So therefore, I got to ask, when is this going to stop? Is it going to stop? How much money been taken from us, and what's being done with the money that was taken from us?
You mean the part money? We used to get, okay.
Yeah, the part money. And we, every year, we lose this money, and we don't know where it's going. We don't even know if it's being spent, if it's being just stacked somewhere. I don't think it's being spent, nothing has showed about it being spent. I think we have a right at least to know that, and if it's not being spent, we should get the money back and go into the project that we did for our citizens. The other one is our Veterans Affairs Office, which we've been down this road before. It's, it's a mess that we got now, and we have never, ever had our delegates involved in our Veterans Affairs Office like we have had now, and that's a major problem. Now, none of us up here going to suffer from that, but our veterans are just going to suffer, and they suffering from it. And they, they can't just speak for themselves, I mean, there's no, no program for them. I think because they're in the county, and they are our people in the county, that we should have some kind of input on what's going on in our Veterans Affairs Office. There's no reason for it to be the shape that it's in now, and why, nobody wants to talk about, which I know the problem is. But that's what we need to look into and get this here straight, and it need to be straight now.
The only thing I want to say is, I had to go to Laurinburg this morning, and it was good to go three-eight-one and go right through McCall before I changed, and I was happy to see that sign down when I got there, and I just want to thank everybody that helped get that done, and I want to thank the families that own that land around there, that I understand they spend a good bit of their own money, too, so I just appreciate that, and it helps me out going three-eight-one from Blenheim, having to go all the way through town, Bennettsville, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Yes, we did open three-eight-one last Wednesday, five o'clock. It was nearly a year-long effort between the Bellinger family, the Governor's Office, Lieutenant Governor Pam Ebbett, Secretary of Transportation Kristi Hall, and then Leland Collin was the engineer that helped us with it. And like I said, it took some time, took a lot more time than we thought, but there's a procedure you go through, and the first step is, is the property owners dealing with de-heck and getting an approved plan that the DOT will act on, and of course, they'll do the bidding or, or contract to work out. But it is, there's traffic on that road is sixteen hundred cars a day, so it was a tremendous setback for not just McCall and Clough, but for everybody really in the county. Also, I'd like to remind you that coming up next month, again, the Master National Dog Trials up at H. Cooper Black in Society Hill, I think this year, they're going to set the record, they're going to have over fourteen hundred dogs competing for the master dog of the year. It's going to bring a tremendous amount of people to the Marlboro, Chesterfield, Dillon area, that they'll be here roughly almost a month, some of them. So that's tourism, restaurant business, hotel business, and hopefully will benefit from that. One other thing, last Saturday, I participated in, in the State Republican Party, voted not to have a presidential primary in 2020, which will save the state of South Carolina taxpayers one point five million dollars. That also saved Marlboro County from having to fund putting sixteen, fifteen precincts open another day to have another primary, so it's a tax savings really for the people of the county, and we estimated in Columbia around one point five million to the state taxpayers, so it's a good thing.
Any word on Academy Road?
We need, Mr. Vernon, we've been talking earlier off and on, and I forgot about it earlier when we spoke. Engineer said that the task would not be as large as the three-eight-one task. The landowner and de-heck is in communication now, so hopefully, after, like we all know it's always a process, and now that three-eight-one is completed, and some of the things are always going through channels, after they do one, and three-eight-one is more populated traffic road than Academy Road, so hopefully, three, Academy Road now will get back on in line and on the map, and hopefully, forty years out, Academy Road will be fixed also. But man said that task is nowhere near as large as three-eight-one, so hopefully it'll be a short, short event.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, Pam at a Brick, the program will start at ten-thirty, then at eleven o'clock, they'll have a tour of their facility, and they're serving lunch, and they'll be over by one o'clock, so if you're available, please come out to that and help them celebrate. I also encourage all of you and people you know to come to the disaster preparedness seminar. A lot of times when things happen, you want to make sure people know what to do, and the right people at the right place rather than other people who don't have a clue, getting involved, trying to tell people, the experts, what to do. Third, I've had some veterans contact me, and they too are real concerned, Mr. Glatten, and their position is they want that position to be filled by a veteran. They think that that would serve them best because they've been through what they've gone through, so I just want to add that to it, and maybe our delegation will fulfill the wishes of the veterans. I attended the CAG meeting, and it was a pretty much general meeting, but one thing I'm happy to report is that we approved an EDA-funded Ports Authority Master Plan Study for the inland port, and Mr. Brown says that they're going to work to expand that, to look at other roads that have potential for economic development, and of course, I strongly suggested that they include Highway Thirty-eight North from Bennettsville up to the North Carolina Line, and he said, of course, that will be included. So we try to get as much traction and support for that project, because we know it'll make a difference to us here in the county. At your place, county members, there's this PD Life, a new magazine being sponsored by our local Herald Advocate Office, and it covers the PD. These have been out for a while, it's quite interesting, and gives you all the latest updates, and I've learned a lot, and there's some places I want to go visit, so you get a copy here. And once again, we thank Mr. Mullin and staff for all the hard work they do on behalf of their county. With that said, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right.